All right, good evening and welcome to the May 6, 2025, meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to invite Reverend Antonio Logan, a good friend of ours, to the podium from Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. He will be giving our invocation this evening. I would ask that if you're able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Logan, we appreciate you being here this evening.
My pleasure. Let us look to God. Oh, God, we thank you. Your word is as blessed as the nations, who, Lord, is the God. First of all, before we make any request, we want to thank you for being sovereign, for the blessings of this day, the provisions, for your protection as well as your favor. Now, we thank you for this meeting and all that is going to convene in it. We pray that your presence be upon us and God guide our hearts, order our steps, that it shall advance us as people, as this city, economically, spiritually, as well as socially, Lord. And we don't wait till the evidence is shown, but we shout victory right now. We thank you in advance because we are people of faith. Now, we give you glory, praise, and honors. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have several very special presentations this evening, and in no particular order, we'll just go by the agenda here, and in no particular order, first up, for a presentation from our North Carolina State Fire Marshal, Mr. Brian Taylor. So I'll ask Mr. Taylor to the podium for his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to let me come before you today. The last time I was in this chamber was a presentation for your Class 1 for your fire department with Commissioner Causey, it was a few years ago. It's good to be back here in Hickory. I come before you today requesting the opportunity to recognize some agencies here within the city, but I'd first like to address you all as the city leadership for this great city, is you have a model city here, a model organization. I spent 25 years in local government with the city of Alamo as a firefighter and fire marshal. I know how the city government runs and how the inner workings work and how vital the agencies, the different agencies within the city are, and how important it is, how they all should work together. But we had this little incident called Helene, a tropical storm which came through North Carolina, a devastation in western North Carolina. And geographically where you sit, you were pretty much the staging area for a lot of things to go either way in the mountains. And when Helene hit, as a state fire marshal, my responsibility is of the North Carolina Fire Service, structural fire protection, and be sure that they have what they need to operate. We had 294 departments, basically, that we had to support during that timeframe. And I made a decision to set up here in Hickory, made a few phone calls, looked at Community College, had some local staff here that works with us, that made some phone calls and reaching out to the Community College about basing our base camp there, calling on the local fire department to help us get set up. You know, it was, timing was everything, but the red carpet was rolled out. Anything you need, we will provide. And I'll speak about some of those instances here shortly. But it was a little unique because I don't work underneath the governor. I work for the legislature. We were recently independent, made independent from the Department of Insurance. We still follow under the umbrella, but when you go in under independence, we don't have the luxuries of a large budget of 500 personnel to operate that. And the legislature hadn't shored us up at the time, so it was very difficult for us to operate against this disaster. So it was, to us, fire service and law enforcement manage under chaos, and we're very resourceful. And that's what we had to do because our budget restraints were tight, and we were begging, borrowing, and stealing to be able to operate. Manager Wood, you came out to see the operation. We had an instant command vehicle from Wayne County here. And of course, during this time, at the local airport, you had a setup there called Operation Hilo that was basically built out of this storm. They were a sister agency of the Operation Fixwing, Operation, can't remember the name of it, but out of Florida.
Airdrop.
Airdrop, thank you, airdrop. So, you know, by joining forces with them, I was able to fly out and meet with fire chiefs out of Hickory and say, what are your needs? What are your needs and what do we need to do to set you up? Because in every community, the fire department is the center of every community. If you can get there and get the fire department set up and then start reaching out to your churches, you can then rebuild your community and move forward. Normally, our biggest issue was communications, and it was important to get that communication. I'm very thankful for the coordination of your staff to be able to get me on aircraft. I delivered the first Elon Musk Starlink with Operation Hilo to Garen Creek Fire Department. And so I go all over the country now to talk about lessons learned and also the public-private partnership, the importance during a disaster, because the federal government, the state government, local government can't do it by themselves. So with that said, I'd like to move into the first presentation. City Manager Warren Wood, if you would come up, I'd like to present you a token of our appreciation.
This wasn't supposed to happen. I told him that. Of course.
Sure.
So this plaque is unique. Fire service wearers, plaques on fronts and the front of their helmet. Organization called Kettle Tens. Kettlehead here was responsible for our base camp here. He ran everything out of Hickory. He's a Toddler County resident. And if you're familiar, he told me the story earlier that the show mash, most of you here should know the show mash, but when they were taken off and had it spelled out there...
When they were leaving the base camp for the last time, they spelled out goodbye in the rocks. And I kind of took that as whenever we've done this right here.
So this is actually hose, turnout gear, and helmets from donations from all over the country. We were the central point of donations from apparatus, turnout gear, air packs, and understand fire departments lost everything. So we were resupplying to give up operations for big trucks coming in and was able to resupply. So that's a picture of this and a helicopter taking off. Notice this was a drone. We had some helicopter pictures as well. But the American flag and the state flag is fire hose, and then the thank you is turnout gear. So I'd like to present you a token of our appreciation and behalf of the state fire marshal of North Carolina for what you have allowed your single organizations to help us to operate during this disaster.
Thank you.
Next up, Chief Hutchins. A few words here. Of course, Chief allowed me to stay in the Fire Station 1 for 11 straight days, and the hospitality I had was like no other. Now, remember, I was a firefighter. I know the camaraderie there, that how, and the jokes and everything goes on, and you got to build respect when you're outside or coming in. I can tell you, they took me with open arms. Generally, I was leaving in the morning, 5:30, 6 o'clock, coming in at 9 until 12 o'clock at night, but they provided me a bed there and linnings to stay there, and of course, most importantly, a place to shower. So I'm very thankful and appreciative of Chief and his hospitality, and especially the men and women of the Hickory Fire Department. So Chief.
Thank you, David.
Just a couple more. Bear with me, please.
You're fine.
So President from the college is, did he come in?
He's here.
Great, great. If you'll come up, please.
Mr. Garrett Henshaw.
President Henshaw, I want to say thank you for you and your staff really accommodating. Now, you actually had a couple of functions going on there because FEMA, just right up the road, had their base camp, which ran out-of-state units. We were an in-state group trying to organize, so you had two different groups operating, and you were very accommodating to allow us to set our base camp up there, even utilize inside the facility. So I want to thank you for your partnership in helping us operate. Airport Director, Chad Hunter Sucker. So I would say this individual had the most challenging task of the entire operation, but was truly the most impactful. Well, I understand that. And just the amount of just chaos that went on there and trying to manage all that was really a task that really nobody probably wanted to take on, but being there during that timeframe and what was able to accomplish out of that airport really was a huge impact for the folks of western North Carolina. So thank you for opening your doors up and allowing Operation Hilo and of course, everything that come through there operate. So thank you very much.
So Mr. Taylor, I have to interrupt you here for that. Did he allow you to go in his office?
One more picture.
Did he allow you to go in his office? Did you see the view? Okay, I just want to make sure you got to see that view from his office.
So a little story about that is that we're building a training facility at Stanley County Airport, one of the sister airports in the middle of the state. We have an RF simulator there that we're building, which will open up pretty soon. So I have that same look over the Stanley County Airport. So as an agency head, I get to designate my office location. I have an office in Raleigh, but my primary office is at the airport, so I envy his view as well. Okay, let's see, covered everybody except for this last person. This is an individual that I'd like to call upon. Fire Marshal Stephen Craig, like I told you before, being a fire marshal, in every community, a fire marshal is probably the most resourceful person in any community. He knows everything that's going on and knows everybody. So if you want to get something done, truly, this is the person you should target first. But I can say he really was an overachiever, and I appreciate that. He is a dear friend. I got to know him after going into this role as a state fire marshal. He calls on me quite a bit. I call on him, but he was really the one that made all the connections for us to be successful. There wasn't a time that our staff, our team on site at the airport and/or the base camp, if a generator went down or we needed a wrecker, anything special, picked up the phone and they were there in a matter of minutes. He and the chief were pulling up from the maintenance division from the city, working on generators, working on trucks, and making sure that we were up and operational. And I want to truly make a special recognition to Fire Marshal Stephen Craig as an honorary state fire marshal for what he did in Operation Helene. This should be a special recognition because only legislators that have funded money toward our training center has gotten this award to this point. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity and time tonight.
Well, Mr. Taylor, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, we appreciate that the state recognizes and that your office has recognized our coworkers. Go ahead and get a picture. Go ahead and get a picture. Obviously, we don't want to have to have a tragedy for it to be recognized, and we know that's not what this is, but it's no surprise to me and our council or our staff that these folks stepped up and went beyond the call of duty because they do that each and every day. So we appreciate you doing that and recognizing them, but it's also, we talk a lot about partnerships and relationships, and that is truly what this was. Our president from the Community College, obviously, we've got partnerships and relationships already established with folks like that and willing to step up and help us and help other communities as well in any way possible, and this is an example of that. So it's no surprise to us, but we certainly do appreciate the recognition, and thank you for once again coming and presenting to our council. We appreciate it.
Right, thank you very much. God bless.
All right, for our second special presentation, I'm going to call upon Ms. Tracy Trimble. Tracy is the General Manager of the Hickory Furniture Mart. She also serves as the Greater Hickory International Council Board of Directors member and the Rudy Wright International Service Award Committee Chair. But before she speaks, there is a very special person here that I want to make sure that we recognize. Donna Wright is, where did Donna go? Donna's here with us tonight. Of course, Donna is the widow of our late mayor Rudy Wright, who served this city as mayor for 16 years, and we can't say enough about Donna and of course, Mayor Wright, and we're happy to hear this presentation, this special presentation that you have tonight, Tracy, on behalf of the Rudy Wright International Service Award Committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Guest and Council. And Donna is actually on our committee, the selection committee, so she is very involved and is part of the award every year. So thank you, Donna. Most of you probably don't know me as the face of the Greater Hickory International Council. I'm one of Hanny's helpers. Everybody knows Hanny. But I am privileged to be on the committee, and we really wanted to do something nice to honor Mayor Wright and his vision for making Hickory and the entire region, the four county region, more internationally focused and open for visitors from everywhere and residents to enjoy a better quality of life. On May 7, 2002, the Hickory International Council was established by the late Hickory Mayor Rudy Wright and the Hickory City Council to serve as a forum for the international community in Hickory and to advise the city council regarding ways to improve Hickory as an international city that welcomes and values international visitors, residents, and businesses of all backgrounds and ethnicities. On July 1 of 2019, with the help and support of current Mayor Hank Guest, the Hickory International Council transitioned to a nonprofit organization and expanded its mission to serve the entire Greater Hickory metro region. Its name was officially changed to the Greater Hickory International Council, which now inclusively serves our four county region of Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba Counties. The mission of the Greater Hickory International Council is to promote goodwill, cultural awareness, cooperation, education, and mutual respect through partnerships and community events. In 2023, the Greater Hickory International Council created the Rudy Wright International Service Award, which is an annual award that recognizes an individual, a business, or an organization that exemplifies the mission and advances Mayor Wright's vision to create an all-inclusive and welcoming region for all. In 1998, just prior to the Hickory International Council being formed, the pastor of First Presbyterian Church in Hickory sponsored a bilingual vacation Bible study to support Latino children residing in a local trailer park. Hickory's first Presbyterian church, other community church leaders, and a group of passionate volunteers gathered to discuss the critical and unaddressed needs of Latino children and their families in the area. From the community response, the Catawba County Hispanic Ministry, DBA Central Latino, was born. Its mission is to empower, educate, and support the Latino community in a safe and culturally sensitive environment and promote unity among residents throughout the Unifor area. Over the years, Central Latino has initiated and managed several successful programs and cultural events that continue to benefit the Latino and non-Latino communities in our region. Special in-person and online programs help clients stay up to date with critical information about immigration. Adult education offerings include health-related programs, English and Spanish language classes, and life skills programs. Partnerships with CBCC and others have allowed their clients to develop job-related skills for better career development and advancement opportunities. Since 2004, Abriendo Puertes, an after-school tutoring, homework help, and enrichment program, has been the flagship of the agency. Hundreds of adults credit this program with preparing them for higher education, which has led them to enjoy successful careers. Partnerships with arts and sciences organizations have allowed the agency to introduce adults and children to brand-new cultural opportunities offered within the broader community. And their annual Todos Somos América festival allows everyone to learn about and celebrate the cultural uniqueness of our neighbors, friends, and coworkers who are of Latin American origin. Now in its third decade, Central Latino remains the only Latino-specific human services nonprofit agency in the region that is dedicated solely to addressing the unique needs of residents of Latin American descent, which now exceeds 10% of the population in the four county region of Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba Counties. It is led by a board of directors and some of the most passionate volunteers around. Central Latino's client services advocate helps Latino residents navigate the complexities of employment, school, and community resources. Their bilingual and bicultural staff supports their clients in navigating the challenge of living and working in the area by providing life-changing community resources and referrals. It is estimated that the agency connected with more than 10,000 Spanish and non-Spanish-speaking residents in just 2024 alone. The Greater Hickory International Council is very proud to honor Central Latino as this year's 2025 Rudy Wright International Service Award recipient. Accepting this award on behalf of Central Latino is Ginny Romero, the Executive Director of Central Latino. Ginny, would you please approach the podium to accept this award and say a few words? And I will let Ginny introduce her group. We are going to be giving Central Latino a plaque that says, "With deepest appreciation and recognition for the outstanding contributions made by your organization, its leaders and volunteers on behalf of the international community, you have promoted goodwill, cultural awareness, cooperation, education, and mutual respect both in the Latino and non-Latino communities for the betterment of our four county region." Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ginny Romero, the Executive Director of Central Latino. It is an honor and pleasure to receive this recognition. I'd like to introduce to you our Board President, Joanne Spies, if you'd like to wave, for those who don't know her, Martha Carrigo, who is also on our Board of Directors, and Victoria Morales, who is our AP Program Director. I really appreciate the opportunity to represent Central Latino and the Latino community in the area, and it's a pleasure to receive this recognition. If you guys would like to learn more about Central Latino, I encourage you to reach out to us via Facebook, Instagram, or our website. We're always open for new partnerships and collaborations, so thank you. Muchas gracias. Se los agradecemos.
$1,000 check to present to the team to go towards future programs. So if you guys want to come up here, and we'll get a picture, we'll get the council to sign it. It's a big check.
Donna, yes. Hanny. Hanny? Certainly want to thank the members of Central Latino and all they do for our community as well. We thank you very much. So our next presentation, I'll be doing the next two, but the next one is our proclamation for National American Public Works Week. And I don't see Steve Miller. Steve, okay, Steve is back there. Okay, Steve's back there, but it's not just Steve. So I want to make this clear. So there's a lot, you can come on up, that's okay. There's a lot of divisions, I guess you could call them, underneath the public works, and there's the central, make sure I don't want to leave any of them out. Central Services, Landscape and Grounds, Fleet Maintenance, Street, Public Utilities, Sanitation, Traffic, and Engineering. Did I leave anybody out, Steve? Building Maintenance? Building Maintenance, okay, so I left one. So if any of our coworkers from any of those divisions are here, we would like for you to come up and be a part of this presentation as well.
That's a rough-looking group there.
So really, and I think it's fair to say this, Public Services and the gentlemen that are represented here, and there are ladies as well, there's no good way to do this without my back to somebody, but I'll have to say this, they touch the lives of every citizen in our community, and a lot of times, folks don't really realize behind the scenes, because a lot of what they do is behind the scenes, and we've talked about this before. You let the trash go unpicked up, or you let there be a water problem or sewer problem or something like that, and believe me, we will hear about that. And these are the folks, and they're the folks that work with them, that make sure that we have a smooth transition and all of those things that we take for granted work on a day-by-day basis, 24/7. So we certainly want to take this opportunity, not only to recognize them, but to thank them for the job that they do each and every day. So this proclamation is in honor of National American Public Works Week. It says, "Whereas public works provide services in our community that are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives, and whereas public work staff are essential workers to ensure the smooth and continued operation of any municipality, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as the water, sewer, streets, highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends upon these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel whose staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through the 24th, 2025, as National American Public Works Week in the City of Hickory, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." Issued this 6th day of May, 2025. All right, it's also coming up in the month of May as our National Police Week, and obviously, we have members, I don't know if we have any civilian members, I know we've got sworn members, I don't know if we have any civilian members that are represented or not, but National Police Week is May the 11th through May 17th, and at this time, I would call forth all of our coworkers from our police department forward, so I can read this proclamation to honor... to honor our police department. Obviously, this is only a small portion of those. I'm sure that there's a contingency much larger than this that's working right now. Perhaps some of these guys are working. But we certainly want to recognize the sacrifices and honor our law enforcement personnel. So proclamation, National Police Week 2025, says, "To recognize National Police Week 2025 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Hickory Police Department. Whereas there were 66,415 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2021, resulting in 22,063 injuries. And whereas a total of 2,652 law enforcement officers die in the line of duty during the past 10 years, an average of 260 per year, there were 118 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2023. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including Gerald Wayne Maynor of the Hickory Police Department on August the 9th, 1977. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staffed. Now therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim May the 11th through May 17th, 2025, as Police Week in the City of Hickory, and publicly call upon all citizens to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duty." Proclaim this 6th day of May, 2025, and I'll present this to our Police Chief, Reed Harris. And Chief Mayor, I think we'll resume some activities going on this week in honor of police.
Yeah, I'll just give an introduction to the general public. They're going to be a ceremony this Friday, 1:00 p.m. at the Memorial Park, uh, in the public, in honor of those all four officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty in 2025.
That's at Catawba Memorial. Thank you again. All right, I know that was a lot of presentations, but they were all extremely worthwhile, and we're very proud of our coworkers and our volunteers and all of those that contribute to this, to making this city a great place to live, work, and play. All right, next is persons requesting to be heard. I don't think we had anybody that signed up to be heard, but we certainly want to provide an opportunity. If you're here and you would like to address the council, we will allow you the opportunity to be able to do that. We just ask that you approach the podium, that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone present from the public that would like to address our council this evening. All right, doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to address our council this evening. At this time, I'll ask if there's a motion or discussion in reference to approving our regular meeting of April the 15th, 2025.
I'll approve the minute.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. Next item, number seven on our agenda, is the reaffirmation ratification on second readings, and once again, I'll call for a vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next on our agenda is departmental reports. We don't have any public hearings this evening. For our one and only departmental report, I'll turn it over to our City Manager, Mr. Warren Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, members of City Council, Mr. Swanson. The one staff departmental report tonight is the Quarterly Financial Report. It will be presented by Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Rodney Miller.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Wood, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Swanson. Good to be with you again tonight. As Mr. Wood said, I will be presenting your quarterly report for the third quarter of fiscal year 2024 through 2025. May 6th, I should have probably presented last meeting, but we had too much going on, so tonight you'll hear about our financial activity. So through March 31st, nine months of the fiscal year, obviously 75% of the fiscal year is complete. The General Fund is your main operating fund of the city. Total revenues, a little over $65 million so far this year, on a budget of $86.3 million. You see last year, $61.6 million. So revenues have increased primarily. Mandy's in the audience, Mandy Hildebrand. Part of that is due to the occupancy tax revenues over the Hickory Metro Convention Center. With the investment that this council did, and with all of her hard work, of her and her team, their revenues have exceeded expectations. I'm estimating they'll probably bring in about $3 million in hotel occupancy tax revenue for this year, so that's really good. So thanks, Mandy, for all your hard work. You'll see in a later slide, another reason for that is investment earnings. Our interest rates have not come down very much, so we're still earning some good returns on our, the city's idle funds. On the expenditure side, you see we have spent $63.5 million compared to $55.8. I'll go over that in just a moment. Again, compared to an $86 million budget. Revenues over expenditures, which is fairly normal, $1.6 million through March, less than last time of this year. So I wanted to go over a couple of items related to that. One, we have done, obviously with the federal government, we have heard the word tariff, and we have tried to get ahead of some of those on some of our purchases, so we have gone ahead and made some expenditures for some big-ticket items and/or encumbered funds, i.e., we've done a number of roofing projects, we've done HVAC, and we've paved, done some paving of some of our parking lots, again, to get ahead of some of this increase that we may see in the future. Also, Chief and I, Chief Hutchinson, we have locked in pricing for some future fire trucks. So we have three fire trucks, we have pricing locked in for the next three years, so that's been a good thing. And also, you heard from Public Works earlier, so Public Works, we've issued some POs for some vehicles across their divisions to go ahead and lock those pricing in as well. So that's why you see there, the 63, obviously, we've spent quite a bit more than last year. Those are the primary drivers for that. I'll also say, we, all your general obligation debt so far this year has already been paid, so we've paid all of our debt, again, that goes in that number as well. That's why the expenditures through nine months are a little higher than last year. The next fund, let me go back and actually talk about staffing. You know, you've heard from me over the last year or two, our staffing issues. We continue to have some staffing challenges. I will say though, and I probably shouldn't jinx it, but our fire department and police department have some in the pipeline that would get us at some of the lowest levels that we've seen in a long time. So through your efforts of trying to accommodate pay and benefits for these individuals, I think we're finally starting to get that bench filled. We will not be full, complete by any means, but when you get to single digits, especially in the police department, that would be a great accomplishment for us, so we're looking forward to that. These are your property tax revenues through March, $38.6 million. We have a budget of $39.1 for this fiscal year. A couple of things of note, number one, there's not a lot of increase between the two years when you compare the prior years. About $400,000 ahead of the pace for last year. We'd like to see at least a million-dollar increase. You'll see on the development slide I have, we continue to get that significant development, but the property tax revenues, they lag. So just because you see a house being built, it's when that house is as of January 1st, if it's complete, and what the value is, that's when we get that, the following year. So hopefully those revenues will continue to increase. So only $400,000 so far through March. I did look on our financials through April this morning, we're just shy of $39 million complete through April. So we'll definitely hit our budget, but again, we use those property tax increases for operating expenditures in the upcoming year. On the sales tax side, that's our second-largest revenue. You see about that same $400,000 difference between last year and this year. I was very concerned months ago, the first few months of the year, we didn't have any increases in sales tax the last couple of months. We have had some, so now we've got about a $400,000 cushion over last year. We hope that continues. Eight months into, you see at the very bottom of that, where there's a little lag from the Department of Revenue, NC Department of Revenue, that we get those revenues, but I'm still estimating that we will exceed our budget, and again, we hope we'll have some increases over, from what we received the prior year. On the Water and Sewer Fund, Will had his cameo up here with Public Works Week, so thanks for coming up, Will, for that, and Public Utilities. This is the Water and Sewer Fund, city's second-largest fund. You see it's got a $43.2 million budget. We have received revenues of almost $31.6 million through March compared to $29.8 last year. We did increase volume charges by 5% this coming year, so that's the difference, it's about 5% higher than last year, so those numbers are holding true to form. You see the expenditures are about the same, $28.1 million compared to last year. As you heard in the retreat, you see we've got about a $3.4 million revenues over expenditures through March. You heard at your retreat, basically, as the mayor mentioned, the majority of the retreat was on water and wastewater. You have some significant challenges going forward, so certainly we want to be able to build funds in there for hundreds of million dollars, millions of dollars of potential investments in the future down the road. I'll mention, also, we have two other funds. I don't have a slide for those, but I just wanted to give you a brief summary of those. The mayor mentioned solid waste, which is basically our garbage services, garbage, trash, recycling. We also have purchased, through Brad Abernathy's help, we are purchasing a garbage truck. We're going ahead and doing that now, locking in another vehicle before the tariffs hit. That fund is doing well, so right now, those revenues are covering the expenses through March. And the airport fund, Chad was recognized tonight, but the airport fund has stabilized. He has commandeered a number of tenants out at the new hangars, and we've got more hangars to come. I think we rode by there during your retreat. We've got a 12,000-square-foot group hangar coming in, being built. It will be finished by the end of the year, and the 12 tee hangars, which are already spoken for, those will be finished, we think, by the end of July. So both those funds are solid and stable, so I just wanted to mention that to you as well. Here's your building permit activity in Hickory for the last, actually, this is through April. I went ahead and included the most recent numbers I had. You see on the actual number of permits, you'll see, here's 2025 compared to 2024. Residential permitting continues to increase. Commercial permits are somewhat down from last year. You see a 27% increase on residential, a six, almost 7% decrease on commercial permits. That holds true also, so for the value, the next two rows, you see, we actually have almost $100 million in residential permit value, which I don't think I've ever seen in a whole year, much less through nine months. So residential value in the building community is doing well in Hickory. On the commercial side, we have lagged behind. Again, this is just through April, so we don't know what's going to happen in May and June, but I'll tell you, on the bottom right, when that Microsoft Data Center gets built, I mean, we're talking billions with a B, when those facilities start going on the tax books. You see, again, the two-thirds of the building activity really is residential, that's these first two columns. Those projects have either started site work or gone vertical in some regards, but I'll say this is a lengthy process, like the first one, Snow Creek. Only 20 of those homes are done, and they've stopped at this point with no phase two. So just because it says 56 single-family homes, only 20 are built, and at this point, those aren't going to be built right now, so we don't know when he's going to pick back up and build those again. So these are potential build-out, and those will take years to build those projects out. Finally, there on the right-hand column, you know, everyone's favorite fast-food restaurant or gas station, certainly those, Whataburger, and we've got another restaurant change coming, which I forget the name of it, but it's coming. And then you've got your car washes. We had one grand opening this weekend on 127, Car Wash, so those folks continue to add commercial activity throughout the city. And again, we're keeping our eye on Microsoft Data Center. You saw a picture, and I think a flyover of that grading activity. I was actually out by Conover and got to see that massive grading site as well, not gotten down to Maiden, but all three sites are very, very active, and there's a lot of bulldozers going on throughout the county. Finally, your investment report for the quarter. We stand about 3.84% for our weighted average yield on all the city's investments. We've received a little over $3 million in investment income so far this fiscal year. There's the breakdown in securities. They're all the same that we had last quarter. Those acronyms are Government Agency Securities. That is a legal investment vehicle that the state of North Carolina allows cities and counties to invest in. Certainly, we're taking advantage of those, and as I mentioned, we have three local government investment pools. Mr. Wood will know, the other Mr. Wood will know something about this. We are somewhat heavy in cash, and we will invest accordingly depending on what we see in the markets. And then at the bottom of that, you see by type of what type, where our investments break down into what category. I think that's all I had this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Miller?
I just have one. FEMA money, that's going to be reimbursed to us, do you know offhand a rough amount of that and when we can expect that?
Three-point, where's Karen?
Right now, there's still some estimates that we need for your block bridge right now, it's covering right around $2.2 million.
$2.2 million.
And it will come in projects, it will all come as one-months on. Our first project is at CRC, which is in their area in Austin, so we should have to start seeing that some of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Did y'all hear that? She thinks by this summer, about $2.2 million is what we've got submitted in the queue.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Deputy Assistant Manager slash CEO.
FFO.
We appreciate that. All right, CFO.
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 I can leave if I need to.
CFO. Deputy City Manager, CFO. All right, do we have any appointments this evening to our boards or commissions? Anybody? All right. Any matters, we do have a matter not on the agenda. I would like to make a motion that when we close, that we go into closed session for an economic development discussion. That's not on our agenda this evening. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
You can stay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that carries unanimously. Any general comments?
I have one.
Okay.
I think this week, I might be wrong on the dates, but I think this week, and Debbie can correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it National Clerks Week this week? can correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it National Clerks Week this week, Debbie?
It is. Or this week? It is.
And she, you know, her humility won't let her do a proclamation for it, but I think, you know, with all her hard work and everything, I think we need to recognize all the hard work that she does.
Well, Councilman Wood?
Yes.
You're exactly correct, and that was on my list here.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And, no, 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 don't be sorry, don't be sorry, because obviously, one of her, I mean, she does so many things, I can't even list them all, and she's an integral part of this council and staff. But she's the one that drafts them and puts them together, all, everything dealing with our proclamations. And we didn't want to ignore it, but she insisted that, look, I do these, and, you know, let's just, let's not do one. So at her request, we did not do a, I did not do a proclamation.
Too humble.
But we certainly do appreciate Debbie, and Iris, and Crystal, and all the ladies that are part of our staff here and work in our, in the city hall here. So we want to say thank you, and make sure that they understand how much we appreciate them, and how important they are to every one of us. So thank you.
She also knows that the mayor doesn't like doing more than a couple of proclamations a meeting. And she said, let's just, she said, let's just take mine off.
Well, that's true. I think, I think last council meeting, we had four. And we didn't have but two today, but we had four presentations. So she's right, I did say that. I'll admit to it. I also want to make note of this week, I think it's this, I think it's Saturday, May 10th, our library, Sarah Green, our library director, is here. And there's going to be a special ceremony. If you don't know, there is a new outdoor stage on the property there in front of the library, behind the salt block. And there'll be a ceremony dedicating that new outdoor stage, that, we're going to claim that as part of the Patrick Beaver Library, I think. So just wanted to mention that. And of course, that'll be open to the public as well. We'll be doing that on Saturday.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, 10 a.m., not 10. All right. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to make known?
I just wanted to say thank you again. Last Thursday, we had our day-long retreat. And the city manager staff, all the department heads, everybody did a fantastic job, actually putting together an agenda for information, discussion. We touched upon kind of the water sewer issue, and it gave us time to really look at, we don't often have that time during meetings, but have some deep discussions about what's coming up ahead. Oh, and our field trip, our visits to all the different sites were incredible, so.
The bus driver was incredible.
Yeah, there's the staff across the board puts a lot of work into that, so I appreciate all of what everybody did.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And we've said this before, there's a lot that goes on, discussion-wise, and presentation-wise, and information-wise. Sometimes people kind of get a misconception when they come to a council meeting and see us act on something. And like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion and information and different things that go on that lead to the presentations at a council meeting and a vote at a council meeting. So I just want to clarify that once again. All right, anybody else? Well, we want to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening. We will be going into our closed session, and we'll return after closed session and conduct any business as necessary and close the meeting accordingly. So thank you for being here again.
Also, Happy Mother's Day.
Oh, Mother's Day, that's Sunday, yeah.
Wow.
Sunday. We didn't forget, it's not Sunday yet.